All right, we got a full crew, except Commissioner Douglas. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We've been working a little OT in the back with a closed session here. So I'm going to call to order the Monday, August 26, 2024 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Cheesem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
For many families in Royal Oak, today was the first day of school for our kids. The first, the first day of school provides a bit of a cadence for life. It's like a new beginning. For parents, it may be a day of extreme relief, hope for a good year for our kids, and nostalgia for the past. For some kids, today may be filled with excitement and maybe a bit of nervousness. But for others, today may be a tougher day where they worry a little bit more about how the year is going to go. Here's an, there's an African proverb that says it takes a village to raise a child. Here, parents, family, friends, neighbors, and leaders are that village. We collectively care for the kids in Royal Oak. Through this body, we make decisions that build the community for Royal Oak's kids of today, but also for their kids. May we do so with love, commitment, grace, and compassion. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy.
I'd like to move approval with the addition of an item to, on the release and authorization regarding pending litigation as discussed in closed session.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We've established an agenda. Okay. I am looking for... Okay, so next on our agenda is a proclamation designating September 2024 National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Sarah Ruski was going to accept this invitation tonight, but due to a logistical issue, she won't be able to make it here. She is an ovarian cancer survivor and certainly does a lot to support the awareness of this campaign in our community and elsewhere. And I will be reading the designation from the podium tonight, or from the dais tonight. So this is a proclamation designating September 2024 Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Tie Michigan teal. Whereas, Tie Michigan teal is a statewide campaign designed to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. And whereas teal is a color representing ovarian cancer. And whereas ovarian cancer is the deadliest of all the gynecological cancers and one of the five leading cancer-related deaths among women in the United States. And whereas in 2024, approximately 19,680 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and sadly, 12,740 will die. And whereas women diagnosed with ovarian cancer have an average five-year survival rate of 45%. And whereas unlike other cancers, there's no early detection test for ovarian cancer. And because symptoms, which are often subtle and mimic other diseases, awareness of symptoms is the key to early diagnosis. And whereas Tie Michigan teal consists of volunteers tying ribbons on trees and signposts throughout cities, towns, and villages in Michigan, providing the local businesses and offices with symptom information cards. Whereas Tie Michigan teal takes place the entire month of September, and the city of Royal Oak supports efforts to educate our residents and all members of the public about ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Now therefore be it resolved, I Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, on behalf of the entire Royal Oak community, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Royal Oak and will join Tie Michigan teal and communities across the state. And we'll, and we'll have teal ribbons tied on trees and signposts and information cards distributed to local businesses and offices to raise awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. And so with that, I'll encourage everybody in our community to take part. Sadly, unfortunately, I think almost all of us have, know somebody that has endured this terrible disease. And certainly, in my family, we have. And so I highly encourage you to participate and look forward to seeing all the teal in September in our community. Okay, item number six tonight is the introduction of Recreation Superintendent Nicole Nikki McEhrchen. McEhrchen? I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
McKeachan.
Oh, I had it right. Well, I always look to my right, by the way. Nikki, you'll find out that Commissioner Macy, I always defer more judgment to her. Mr. Felipski.
Well, good evening, Mayor Fournier, City Commissioners. I have some good news to share tonight. Before I do, if you would allow me to digress for just a quick second to reflect on the Woodward Dream Cruise a couple of weekends ago. As you know, DPS crews play a huge part in that, both before, during, and after the event. For the car show that we host and the event more generally, there's a lot of tasks to be done, and they all stepped up and worked really hard. This year was a more significant challenge, being that we were short a position, the Superintendent of Recreation position. And there was a lot that we had to scramble with, beginning in April, when we start planning for this event. But we huddled with the staff, and we split the work up. We pulled off not only a successful event that was typical for other years, but we got a lot of positive feedback from the vendors, participants, and spectators relative to other years. So that was really good to hear. And the efforts of staff have kind of positioned us better for, for future years. And in particular, there's two individuals that were critical to that this year. They stepped up, did a lot of heavy lifting in advance of this and during the event. Lee Collick, who's our recently appointed operations manager, did a fantastic job, along with Elena Bordine, our recreation clerk. Both of whom took on a whole bunch of extra duties and did it really well, and in good spirit. And I'd be remiss tonight not to recognize them for their efforts this year. And they're just two fantastic examples of who we are and what we do at DPS. And on that theme, the good news of the night is that we also, after a long exhaustive search, a very deliberate recruitment process, after reviewing many qualified candidates, found a good candidate for the Recreation of Superintendent position. She stood out, and we were able to recruit her, fortunately. And I'm very optimistic about the future of the Recreation Department, and would like to turn it over to Nikki McKeachan for a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm delighted to be joining the City of Royal Oak team as your new Superintendent of Recreation. When my family moved from out of state seven years ago, we chose to purchase a home in Royal Oak because of the wonderful park system we are so fortunate to have. And I have just had a great first day. It is my first day today, so I'm so happy to be here. I have over 12 years of experience in public service. The last seven years, I served with the City of Troy Recreation Department, most recently as their Assistant Director. I am a certified Parks and Recreation Professional, and I hold an MPA from Indiana University. I previously served on the Royal Oak Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I currently serve on the Michigan Recreation and Park State Association Board of Directors. I'm so excited to work with you all and city staff to continue to improve our wonderful park system and to continue offering wonderful quality recreation programs to our residents and visitors. So thank you all for having me.
Well, thank you for joining the team. We're very excited to have you. And I know during the hiring process, both the city manager and Mr. Felipski had great things and high expectations to say, I think we have a really, really good candidate, lives here in Royal Oak. And we're just so excited to see all the great things you're going to do for our, our shared community. So, welcome. Oh, Commissioner Macy wants to say something.
I just want to say welcome too. Well, I was pretty much going to say exactly, exactly what the mayor said, is that we were hearing these things, these wonderful things about this new candidate, and then they said her name, and I was like, I know her! She was on Parks and Rec! So welcome back. We're so glad to have you. And I, my memory is that you know a lot of things and are pretty no-nonsense about getting things done. And we absolutely need that here in Royal Oak, so we're very excited to have you. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Nothing like first day, having to come to a city commission meeting. Okay, that brings us to item seven, which is a presentation of amended Holiday Village Plan by John Witz.
Good evening, members of City Commission, Mayor Fournier. I am here to request, to amend the program, the Holiday Village program that was presented to you a few months back. I will give a couple of, a few things that we've run into in the process. One of them were some budget challenges related to the curation of the exhibits to meet the standards of what was presented to you. Another one was related to the labor that was pledged to the city and us, which is not, was not quite up to expectation, and a few other issues that have come to, which it led me to look at the program from top to bottom. And with the amount of significant investment that both the city and the DDA had committed to the project and the standards when we do a large projects, whether it be an event or the skating rink, you know, we were concerned about meeting the level of standards that the commission had not only spoke to related to the budget and related to what their expectation would be. I want to state that in my, in my strongest opinion, I never would have taken this on if I did not believe in the city's vision in this. I thought it was a great vision and, you know, put a lot of time into it. And I do believe with what we're presenting today that we have a, you know, an exciting plan that is a little bit more of a reasonable spend and something that I'm confident that we can deliver at a high level, as well as set the stage for taking a shot at this again in 2025. So without, I wanted to give that background and mention, you know, on the financial side, we are now asking for just 25% of the money that we initially asked for from the city and the DDA. So those totals are 112,500 versus the much more significant number that we were pledged. And we will still, as part of that, create three of the themed structures in working with the union. And as, on a lesser amount, there will still be horse and carriage rides that will be covered in this budget. Numerous visits with Santa, which will be around the skating rink. Social media, television, and radio marketing for the city and the holidays. And the signature features will be something that I think we all believed in, which is the moving of the tree lighting, two centennial commons, accentuated lighting and decor on the large oak tree, as well as school presentations, entertainment, the closing of Troy Street with rides and games, connecting it to the farmer's market, craft show. So on November 22nd, I think we're going to really amp that up with marketing. We are also going to do the Royal Oak Elf Hunt, which was a favorite among local businesses, which is a program that is designed and driven, or designed to drive folks into downtown businesses. It's a really fun program. It's a scavenger hunt, different elves. We had presented this to you before, but that program remains. The Cookie Crawl is part of this budget, and then we're also looking at Royal Oak High School holiday performances on the 7th of December, which would be the same day as the, as the Cookie Crawl. With the structures, we're going to do our best that we can to fill those with local businesses or use them to enhance the skating rink presentation. Again, the question is, will be, would the crowds be what we need to drive the businesses? And I think there's more detail in the information that I sent to the city, but those are the basics. And I'm going through to see if there's anything pertinent that I should mention. There's still, a part of that budget, about, almost 20%, is advertising and marketing for the holidays that supports the rinks, the special events, and the downtown. So I think I will leave it to see if there are any questions. But I really come to you with my, my apologies and, you know, and I thank you, you know, for the commitment to this. And I apologize that I could not bring it to the level that I presented. But, you know, I, under no circumstance want to ever not come through when the city shows its faith in the work that we do. So that will be, that will be what I have, and I'm available for questions. And we're just basically asking to, for 25% instead of the original amount of money.
Questions for Mr. Witz. So what I hear is we're still going to have, you know, something that we can all be proud of, but maybe it's a one additional step this year before something that is possible for the bigger vision. So a little bit more manageable, aligns more with the, the cost estimates that we had, given the fact that there was a little bit of a slight issue with getting all the support we needed for the construction of the, of the units. But nonetheless, we can get three, and it'll be a good, good trial, in your opinion, before we, and we can learn from it and see what makes sense as we start to grow and make sure Royal Oak is a destination for everyone, all seasons.
Yeah, and we're going to build around the rink, and we're really going to focus this holiday season on recruitment, whether it be not necessarily Frankham, Chicago, Grand Rapids. But we're going to get around and really, you know, get to work on, 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 you know, making sure the curation part can meet. So that doesn't slow us down, because I think there are other avenues and just union labor to, to get support for these structures. And I think the vision that you had and the city had is an exceptional vision, and we just want to make sure we can deliver it right.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate a vendor coming to us and saying, hey, this plan can't be executed as we had originally envisioned. But here's a pivot that can make a great program for Royal Oak. I appreciate that we, you know, there was ability to, I mean, we did have a contract, an agreement, and there was going to be substantial costs to that. I'm sure something could have been done with those funds. But to provide, you know, a world-class entertainment in our downtown in the holiday season, I really appreciate that someone's coming to us and saying that, you know, how we originally thought about it, it's like a work. We could scale it back and still provide something great. So I just, I think that this is a great pivot for the city.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Colo. I think, you know, it's not always, I won't say it's disappointing a little bit, right? Because, but not to the promoter's fault, but it's better to do something right than to do it, you know, at scale and do it poorly, because I think that has the opposite effect. If you can't pull it off with all the right moving parts at the, the level of quality that our residents and visitors expect, then you have another problem, where they're like, what is this? And they don't come back. So everything you do has to be quality, and even if it's a little bit smaller, but still higher quality, I think that, that is a far better trade-off. So appreciate you, all the work that you've done, Mr. Witz, trying to figure out how to pull it off and then throw in a few curveballs and a few, you know, unexpected issues that arise, and then we, instead of giving up, re-scoping, retooling, and still providing something that's going to be a tremendous benefit, I think, to the, to the community at large. So, thank you. All right, this brings us to number eight, which is Public Comment. All right, a few words here before we commence. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at Public Comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no worries, don't hesitate. We get a lot of feedback. Email is very common. And often, if we get an email, you know, a week ahead of time or a few days ahead of time of a meeting, it's even better, because it allows us to process that information. And please note, the City Commission doesn't typically respond to questions that are asked at Public Comment. However, we are writing those questions down. When the topic's discussed, we'll bring up those questions. If your issue isn't related to any agenda items, or your questions aren't related to any agenda items, please make sure that you leave your contact information with our wonderful Community Engagement Specialist Judy Davids. That way, we have a way to get back to you. So the question just doesn't hang out there, and we don't know who to send the answer to. So with that, who's first? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Sullivan. I live at 1322 McLean Avenue. I'm here to voice my disapproval with the Airbnb at 1328 McLean. I'm here to voice my disapproval with the Airbnb at 1328 McLean. It's like living next to a motel in the middle of a residential area. We have lived in Royal Oak for 36 years. We purchased our home in 1988. We remodeled our home because Royal Oak was a great place to raise our daughter and the location was excellent. It was, it was excellent for my work. I'm a retired plumber out of Local 98. We thought we'd be able to live out our retirement here, but it feels like we're getting forced out by this Airbnb. A month ago, a group of 10 people were passing joints around in the front yard. I know it's legal, but to do it in the front yard is ridiculous. My grandkids and the children in the neighborhood shouldn't be exposed to that. The weekend of the Dream Cruise, there were seven vehicles and at least 14 people partying in the front yard with loud music and parking in front of a fire hydrant. One of our neighbors called the police and reported the partying and the car in front of the fire hydrant. Two police cars showed up. They asked people to keep the noise down and did nothing about the vehicle in front of the fire hydrant, which stayed in that same location till the next day. I talked to the homeowner yesterday and I explained what's been going on. He said he has cameras throughout his house and he said he could only count four people. He'd been out of the country. His cleaning lady had locked her phone in the house and asked us to use our phone so she could get the code to get back in the house. There was no answer. I don't know who approved this Airbnb. He has trash stacked up next to his garage and the neighbor's privacy fence. His garbage cans haven't been taken out going on three weeks. He's left his garbage cans out on the street for almost two weeks when it's been taken out. Now there's rat holes going under my fence. Skunks and possums have been going up his driveway. When my neighbor moved in, we were, we were there to help him out. So it was our first, it was his first house. And he's, he was, he was starting a painting business. He didn't have a lawn mower. I cut his grass for the entire summer. My wife plucked his weeds, watered his flowers. I even kept him shoveled out in the winter. We split the cost of tree removal and the prop, and we split the cost of a privacy, privacy fence between us. I don't know who okayed Airbnbs in Royal Oak. That's a question I, it just blows my mind. And I was going to ask, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, do any of you have anybody at an Airbnb next to you? And now he has three houses in Royal Oak. So good luck to the rest of the neighbors.
Mr. Sullivan, I'll break my rule and I will just give you, one, I hope that you can talk to the, the police department, call them tomorrow, non-emergency. And two, we just recently passed a Airbnb ordinance here that puts significant pressures on nuisance properties. So we got to start that process because if everything you're saying, I take you at your word, is accurate, that's not acceptable. And we have a provision to make the nuisance go away or they're, they're just not allowed to have Airbnbs that lose all.
Like I said, we love this community. We've been here forever and.
And we feel your pain, yes. If you ask, if I have Airbnbs near me, yes, I've had them. And most of them, a couple of them are good. And there's been some that haven't been so good. And so now we have a mechanism that wasn't afforded to us before to be able to address exactly this situation.
Okay. Well, thank you for my time. I appreciate it.
And it's right off the press too. So it's only a couple of weeks old, two weeks old. So this is good timing you're here.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Gantina.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Woody Gantina, 1422 Edgewood. I'm also the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board. It's in that capacity that I'm here tonight to speak on Agenda Items 10 and 11 and encourage another affirmative vote for both of those ordinance amendments. With respect to Agenda Item 11, the fugitive dust ordinance, the air quality in Royal Oak is already a concern based on our location in the middle of the major thoroughfares of I-75, 696 and Woodward Avenue. But we can't change our location. What we can do is adopt the policies to ensure that Royal Oak is taking the steps to not contribute to the issue and ensure good air quality for our residents. I'd like to specifically acknowledge past and current board members, Jennifer Acevedo, Pam Lemmy and Nick Marsletti for their work in helping to gather the data and information that brings this item before you today. With respect to Agenda Item 10, in the first reading of this ordinance amendment, there were concerns about young people maybe not having enough life experience to make sound decisions. I would rebut that with, I know plenty of adults, probably on some of our boards, that struggle to make sound decisions. But beyond that, they are only one voice amongst a vetted group of other board members. Their votes will always matter because they should. But they will either be in the minority or majority of an issue and the guardrails are inherently built in. We feel as though the voice of any student that volunteers their time on a board to make their city should matter. These are our future leaders after all, who are engaged and impactful and should have the commensurate seat at the table. What better way to help them learn the process of local governance? Who knows, they may one day be a city commissioner, our mayor, or maybe even our president. And it's all starting from here. But don't take my word for it. I believe you'll also be hearing from a current board member who was previously a student board member on the importance of this amendment. So I encourage you during these second readings of these two ordinance amendments to have another affirmative vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gantina. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Zoe Chace. I am, I live at 1122 Marywood and I'm also here to speak on Agenda Number 10 concerning the student representatives being allowed to vote. Excuse me. By not allowing student representatives to vote on city board, we are holding back young, talented community individuals from making an impact on Royal Oak. As someone who started out with the Environmental Advisory Board as a student representative and as now a board member, not having the ability originally to vote and make my impact, I felt as though I wasn't really serving my community. I felt like what I was doing, volunteering my time, didn't really matter because I couldn't put a vote in, no one would really hear me. I don't want that to be the case for future student representatives and other people who will take my place. Student representatives should feel as though they do have a place at the board meetings that they sit at, the board meetings that they volunteer their time for. They feel as though, they should feel as though their impact is immediate, not something that they have to wait for and wait for and wait for until they hopefully become a board member. The EAB and being a part of it has taught me so much about how public policy works in Royal Oak and has even motivated me to pursue a career in sustainability. And I feel as though if we are holding future student representatives back from voting, we are also holding them back from realizing their full potential. Being a student representative can hold a very positive impact on the people who hold that position. It can be very inspiring, helping resident community members welcome new voices. You know, people who have been here a long time can sometimes feel as though they can't adjust to new voices. I feel as though if they're given full potential, the ability to vote, it'll be a little bit easier of a shift for those older representatives. And it will make those people, the new people, feel as though their impact matters and that they are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? If you have anything, if you want to hand it to the clerk, she can register it in.
Oh, okay. Well, this is a whole package.
Yeah.
Amanda.
Okay.
Nancy Poprovsky, for the people and the planet. And the handout that I just gave is about the LED lighting that I spoke about at the last meeting. Please read it when you have time. The full copies went to Amanda. The other ones, if you don't get to read all of it, it's also online. When I turned 17, I was appointed along with another student to serve on the library board in my city. This was very exciting and an honor to have a voice in community outreach, events, projects, et cetera, for the library. Was I able to vote on the board? No. But many times when my fellow student associate and I pursued or had an idea adopted, we were recognized in the media or awarded a certificate of merit. We didn't have the total responsibility of the adult board and that was okay. This way, we could still make that Led Zeppelin concert, hang out at the mall, work a part-time job, or even do our homework. Energy, youth and fresh outlooks are definitely needed in all communities. Being focused through your school year days is a challenge in itself. At 18 and maybe away at college, you get the new opportunity through trial and error to hopefully make the right decisions. This is a good reason why we wait for people to be 18 to legally vote. In 1972, I was 18 during the presidential primaries. I was voting either McGovern or McCarthy. I preferred McCarthy due to his staunch anti-Vietnam platform. But to show that I wasn't exactly totally mature, I thought McCarthy was better looking than McGovern. And of course, we should never compare candidates' looks for votes. Please give these wonderful young adults the experience of serving committees first before being able to make final votes. But please recognize their important contributions always. I really admired what this young girl said. But, you know, I've noticed in our lives, we rush our children through everything nowadays. Let's get them here. Let's get them there. Let's let them do more. Let's, let's slow down a little bit. I so appreciate people that are so concerned about our environment, you know that. But give her time to learn a little more, know a little more, and that's when she should be able to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, Ms. Wagman.
Good evening, Janice Wagman. First of all, I want to thank you for the proclamation regarding ovarian cancer. I too know someone, my mother passed away in 2008 from it, so I really appreciate that proclamation. I want to address consent Agenda Item I, the ARPA submission. I believe that the balance is in conflict with the capital improvement plan as well as expenditures to date. The animal shelter, we had federal funds approved in 2022 of roughly a million dollars. And we committed in January of 2023 to 200,000 from ARPA. We also committed to a contract with Krieger Klatt for 138,000 without going to bid because we wanted to, quote, "hit the ground running." The original estimated amount of the project has been adjusted on the new CIP to $2 million. I understand that's rough, but it leaves an $800,000 deficit, which we all know our general fund cannot afford. So what I'm asking is, and I don't see any additional grants from the state or the federal government that are coming through. So what I'm asking for is, what is the status? What's happening with the animal shelter? It's been quite a while. Money was dedicated in 2022. Are we going ahead with purchasing half a building, which doesn't have outdoor walking space for the animals? Are the federal funds time-limited, like the ARPA funds? Do we have to spend them, dedicate them, figure out what we're going to do with them by a certain amount of time? Or are we going to lose a million dollars? I highly doubt that, but I'd like to know a status. Have the costs been adjusted to something the city can afford? Or are we going to use the funds to renovate the existing structure and start over, throwing away what I believe to be almost $96,000? And that was reflected in the ARPA statement in expenses to date, plus the balance of the contracts that we've already committed to. Regarding the farmer's market bathrooms, again, the contract was granted without going to bid to Krieger Klatt so we could hit the ground running. The original estimate was $750,000, but now the CIP says 2 million, or says 1 million. So we're $250,000 over what's in the CIP. So I believe that the allocation balance remaining is greatly overstated and I suggest reviewing these items before allocating any more of our ARPA funds. And once that's done, post it to our city's website because it's not there now. I'd also like to see the agenda changed. We talked about this back in March. It changed to one long 500-page document or whatever it happens to be. It was supposed to change back to links to the documents that are on there and I would really like to see that changed as promised. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. All righty, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda tonight? Commissioner Hunt.
I would like to remove 9H from the consent agenda.
8, the resolution to dissolve Employee Relations Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so the consent agenda consists of everything except item H. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kolo. Discussion on the consent agenda has moved? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, former item H on the consent agenda, resolution to dissolve the Employee Relations Committee. Commissioner Hunt.
This is for Mr. Grachowski. I understand that this resolution is seeking to dissolve the Employee Relations Committee. It's been around for quite some time. So I'm hoping you can give a bit of an overview as to why now it's being resolved, dissolved. And I see in the resolution that it mentions para would govern any grievances that an employee may have. I just want to make certain that if there are any unrepresented attorneys, or employees within the city, that they have a process of airing grievances, which the Employee Relations Committee would have otherwise allowed them.
If I may, thank you for that. As kind of briefly outlined in the executive summary, this committee was created in 1942, predated the Public Employee, Employment Relations Act, para, that Commissioner Hunt just mentioned. And it predated most, if not all, the collective bargaining agreements in the city. That was very early on. That was amended in approximately 1959, changing the composition of the board from certain city officials to all city commissioners. Not sure what the precipice for that change was. I actually went back and looked at all the original minutes from both of those meetings. I can tell you at the time in 1942, when this was first adopted, there was a, basically a labor dispute with the DPS that was, was the precipice for the creation of this. But since then, as you know, we have enacted the Public Employment Relations Act. We have collective bargaining agreements. To answer one of your questions, Commissioner Hunt, all of our employees are represented in some form or fashion by a collective bargaining agreement, except the executive department heads. But all employee rights are provided a legal process for grievance arbitration procedures, either by those collective bargaining agreements or Civil Service Commission. And so we believe that because of that and because of the age of this, this has been a very rarely, if at all, used tool. It was brought to light recently that there was one remaining contract that we're working to remove this as a potential option because quite frankly, it's not, no longer a viable, useful tool since we do have, you know, the para and the collective bargaining agreements and the Civil Service Commission. We believe those afford everybody the rights. And because this isn't a used process and puts the onus on elected officials, determining employment-related issues is, is not really appropriate either, given that we have all those related laws and other protections that afford all the employees, all the rights to grievance and arbitration provisions and opportunities if there is an employment-related issue.
Thank you for that. So it's only the one contract that's remaining that has this committee as the resolution for.
It's a very convoluted process to get there. There's, there's a number of steps. And as a matter of fact, that the intent is to get the collective bargaining agreement for that unit in line with the rest of the collective bargaining units because that's the only one that this could possibly ever come up in that situation. So for consistency's sake, it only makes sense. So for consistency's sake, it only makes sense to make sure that all the collective bargaining agreements remain the same. And quite frankly, the arbitration process is the proper process that any collective bargaining agreement or grievance process, or whatever the collective bargaining agreement provides for, should be the proper process, not this antiquated process that really doesn't make any sense or is a viable option really anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any motions or Commissioner Hunt?
I move approval of nine each, which dissolves the Employee Relations Committee.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Hunt. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item 10, the proposed ordinance amendment 2024-09, high school student appointments to boards and commissions, second reading. Mr. Grotowski.
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda again for second reading is a proposed ordinance amendment for your consideration to basically create a voting members of students that may serve on various advisory boards and commissions. I did provide an update from first reading on an issue that was raised by Commissioner Douglas that tended to snowball into some other issues concerning a student member becoming a voting member, what effects that may have on quorum, overall composition of that board. And based on that, we had suggested a possible case-by-case review of each ordinance or enacting ordinance or enacting resolution when a particular board or commission was interested in moving towards allowing students to be voting members. There may be a cleaner way to do that after thinking about that, after preparing this. But I'll let you have that discussion and guide what direction you'd like to see this to go in. There might be a more holistic approach to work the goal of, of what is desired by the majority of the commission here to move forward, but in a way that maybe makes more broad sense. And certainly will look forward to, you know, maybe discussing that if that's a direction you'd be interested in looking at as well.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I'm just going to renew my support of this. It was nice to have a former student rep here to talk about it. I wish we could have had Leah and Josie here. They would have told us what's what. Those were the two student reps in question who want to become voting members and I think would be great voting members. So I, you know, understanding the point that, you know, kids can, kids are growing up fast, but actually really not. We're protecting kids in a lot more ways now than we have in the past, and there are some very capable, smart kids, and those are the ones who are coming forward and saying, I want to help my community by serving on these boards. And once they're there, it feels really unfair to say, your voice counts, but only, not as much as everybody else's. So I just, I continue to support this. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the, considering of the bylaws or whatever needs to be done with, on a case-by-case basis. I also tend to think it doesn't really matter, because we don't end up with a lot of, first of all, people miss meetings all the time, and so we still would end up with an uneven number, and it's just pretty rare on all of our boards, except maybe traffic, that we end up with anything close to a tie vote. So it seems sort of like it's probably fine to just let them continue, but I'm, I'm open to those discussions, but I, I do think that, I do support this, and it's not just because I know those two great students, but we've had some on the library board as well and on Parks and Rec, and it just feels like I, it felt unfair that those student, student voices weren't heard equally. They certainly contribute a lot.
Ms. Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I agree with Commissioner Macy. I think that students have a voice. You know, it's silly that we have a, you know, looking at Parks and Rec, we have a bunch of adults making decisions about what playgrounds should look like and who best knows what playgrounds might, the best use for them, or the recreation needs of the city, of the youth, if we don't actually have youth engaging that we're talking about and looking at the best way to make these decisions. And, you know, they are the future and really can add a new multi-dimensional, multi-generational voice to how we grow and improve our city. So I'm, I'm fine with that. I, what I do want to talk about, I kind of want to go back to Mr. Grotowski here and talk about maybe a cleaner way to have the boards and committees, as opposed to looking at bylaws every time, and some instances changing ordinance, which requires a month worth of work of first reading, second reading. I wonder if there's a way that we, in this ordinance, can preemptively look at those situations and see if there's just one blanket statement we can make now that would apply to future changes here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I did give this some thought, and like I said, in the report that's been provided to the commission tonight, it was initially thought that we could administer this on a case-by-case basis. I would certainly be interested in pursuing an alternative where it's a, a broader approach in the general sections, which basically would consistently apply student voting members uniformly across all boards and commissions, with the possibility of not having to actually change or amend their enacting ordinance or resolution and bylaws, but create a ordinance in the spirit of 12-3 that creates a uniform policy process, procedure for allowing student members to be voting members without having to go on a case-by-case basis and review every single board and commission's ordinance or resolution. I don't have a specific recommendation tonight, so if that's something the commission would like to explore, I would respectfully ask, maybe we table this. I could bring that back in a few weeks with something more concrete as far as what that may look like, if that is the desire of the board to maybe explore that. I do believe it could be a cleaner process, but that will take some work to explore that. Or we can proceed as is, but that may take a lot longer time and, and obviously could involve a lot of different amendments to different types of things, which I think is what Commissioner Collo is trying to avoid, which is actually a good, good point.
I'm in support of having students vote on the advisory commissions and boards that we have in the city. And I want to say that Zoe Chace was an exceptional student member on our board. She brought a lot of value, and so much so that we begged her to stay on as a resident member, and we're so proud that she has chosen to continue to support community in this way. I think that we help students in so many ways. We mentor them on sports, soccer and baseball. We mentor them in the arts. And, but this is an opportunity for us to all mentor students on the process of doing civic work and to understand, just how Zoe mentioned, how to work together in a meeting setting, for a student to see how adults work in the real world before they're out there and they have to make mistakes. They can see how long it is to create policy in the city and how long it takes to effect change, and how patient you have to be in this whole process. So we ask our students and our youth to be engaged. And to Commissioner Macy's point, what does it say if we don't give them this voice? We want you to be engaged, but not too engaged. So I also agree that the cleaner the process, let's not make it too difficult. Many of these boards don't really have these tied votes, so whatever is the easiest way to get them their voice, I am in favor of that.
Commissioner Cheesem?
Yeah, I missed the last meeting because of a family emergency. Everything is fine now, but, so I didn't get to speak at the last meeting, and I just wanted to share. So I'm a, I was a youth development worker for several years in my early career, and I know that there is some discussion about, you know, the students who are attending our boards tend to be really, you know, strong students, really, you know, good kids that are really, some of them maybe really advanced kids in the community. I've also seen kids that were more at risk, that were more, you know, came from homes that, you know, we made assumptions about and, and had a tough time, and I saw them thrive when given an opportunity to lead and given an opportunity to, to express themselves, to express their concerns, and to be part of change that would really impact them. And so to me, I think that this is a really important step for us as a progressive community to show that we trust our youth, we trust our youth to make good decisions, and that we support them. Sometimes there is some adult mentoring that helps that process along and helps those youth really thrive in that situation. But I'm fully in support of having them have the, the opportunity to vote on the boards in which they sit and donate their time. I'm, I'm kind of agnostic to the process, so I'm interested in hearing more of the conversation. It seems like making that streamlined process makes sense, but I definitely want to, definitely full support.
I want to say, last time, I had mixed feelings about this, and I voted no. And I said, but I would keep an open mind, and I could be persuaded to move the needle closer to yes. And I will say, because of Ms. Chase and Mr. Gantina, that needle has definitely moved towards the direction of yes, and certainly with the compelling arguments that my colleagues have made, I'm closer. I don't disagree. It's not a matter of maturity, competency, and I totally understand the argument of serve on the board, volunteer on the board, I have the competency, the motivation, the energy, and I should be part of the decision-making process. And I don't disagree with that on the surface at all. My challenge that I struggle to get over is, you know, in the end, you know, we define adult, an adult as eighteen, let's say, okay? For voting, for draft, for all of these things, prosecutions, you name it. I've been serving up here for 12 years. Before that, I was on some boards. And I guess maybe, I don't know if it's a bias, or maybe it's just some of the scars that I've endured. We have a number of times where board members today that are voting board members, when somebody disagrees with them in the community, they come out, I mean, in planning, we make decisions to solve, let's say, the housing crisis or something. And those are always debatable. Members on the same board don't always agree. Some of the public or people adjacent to the neighborhoods don't always agree. But then all of a sudden, now, if you're a voting member, you get called corrupt, you know, you're on the take. We even had somebody leave the meeting once, and I won't mention who they were and what committee it was, but they were intimidated in the parking lot. And so I just, I think of, you know, some of the consequences that are positive, and I agree with all of those. Weighing that against the political climate, especially at the local level, as we start to push and have to accommodate the changes that, you know, and solve the problems of the community. And it doesn't always happen just here. It happens at the Parks and Recreation Board, it happens at the library board. I can only imagine, you know, a 14, 15, 16-year-old kid having a discussion about what books should or should not be in the library, and, I mean, having folks, you know, try to persuade that individual. And I, I think that that is a concern to me, that I, I don't know how I get over that. So again, it's not for me an issue of maturity, competency. It's more of a concern of, unfortunately, in today's political climate, there are aggressors out there that, you know, challenge any and everybody who votes. I mean, heck, if you speak at a conference, sometimes people will try to call you out and tell where your address is, just for expressing your opinion. So I struggle a little bit, because I do have this concern about putting our youth in the line of fire, so to speak, that we as adults have, and I'm saying adults based on the definition of eighteen, sign up for in our capacity as, as, you know, that legal definition endures. So I still struggle a little bit with that. I think about my 16-year-old kid joining a library board, having progressive thoughts, voting, and having someone hang outside our house. I get enough crap just as mayor, and even if they get 10% of it, or 1% of it, that's pretty scary. So I don't know how to rationalize that in my head, so therefore, my first instinct is to go super conservative on it. But that's me. Commissioner Collo?
You know, Ms. Mayor, I appreciate that, and I think all of us up here hear that, and, and, you know, especially, you know, there's a lot of parents up here and people, young loved ones, and, and can, we feel that, right? You know, it's not our job to appeal to the lowest denominator, right? Like, it's our job to raise it. So like, we're making a better community, and this will only help that. Having children, you know, having young, intelligent adults who are there to move the forward, the conversation forward, not only impacts decisions made today, but hopefully impacts the world tomorrow, right? So this is a really long game plan here. So they might experience that today, and hopefully, this raises the political candor and discussion as we move forward. I mean, we, if teaching youth now about the vitriol that we see, we talk about banning books. There was someone in this room tonight who actually tried to get a book banned at the library, who spoke in public comment. That happens. It happens in our community. You don't think about it. Exposing our youth to this, and hopefully in a, in a manner that is a little bit more controlled, there's other responsible adults around, I'm sure parents will be there, it's, you know, it will only make the future better, probably. I hope.
Anybody else? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Collo?
So as for motion, listening to the attorney state that he has a potential solution to make this a clean streamlined process, I'll move to table this to a future meeting, hopefully in two weeks, so that we can see what these potential options are.
Is anyone going to second that? Seconded by Commissioner Hunt? Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
So is there a reason that we have to do it together? Like, I guess I didn't get that part.
So I think what's, what's being discussed is tabling this to, basically, it would be a complete rewrite, or in addition to what you're currently looking at, to basically create a process where there's one ordinance that's equally impactful to all boards and commissions, that does a process that allows a student member to be a voting member, that also addresses all the concerns with, you know, quorum, overall composition of the border committee, and other issues that were brought up, such as student members are like for one year, I believe, whereas most boards or commissions are two- or three-year appointments. So there might be an opportunity to basically look at one clean ordinance amendment that sets forth those parameters uniformly across all boards and commissions, so we're not individually going back and nitpicking every single ordinance or resolution that established that border commission, but rather kind of a holistic approach that, so we're uniform across the board for all the boards and commissions. Happy to do that. If, you know, that's not the consensus of the board, we can move forward with this, but then that will certainly trigger a case-by-case type of analysis for each and every border commission.
So just following up on that, because this seems, that seems like a lot, right? It seems like a lot of work for you. It doesn't sound to me like it's probably going to be back here in two weeks, and, and this just itsy-bitsy little ordinance here does some work. So I just wonder, is there a reason not to pass this, to do the work so they can vote? And then if we're going to do an overhaul, I guess it doesn't seem to be like this is like hugely in conflict and editing many things that you're then going to have to go back and amend again. It seems like you're already going to have to do a whole, you see what I'm saying?
I understand, and, you know, if that's what the majority wants to do, that's fine. I, two weeks might be ambitious to come back with a full amendment that tries to accomplish all the goals. We'll do our best. But as you know, we're extremely busy, and this could get the ball rolling. But uniformly, if we were to make that change, you know, now presently as presented, we could always try to work in any subsequent amendments that I've kind of proposed this evening later on in the process. It would still understandably not be implemented immediately, because there would still need to be certain changes to the underlying board or commissions, you know, either ordinances or bylaws, or maybe all that. And I'm trying to avoid that for the boards and commissions that desire to move forward with that by a, a comprehensive ordinance amendment. Sorry, I didn't bring that to you as part of this originally. Sorry, I didn't bring that to you as part of this originally. You know, time was somewhat of a constraint in this regard, but, you know, either way, I'm fine with either one. I think we can accomplish the overall intent and goal, one way or the other. It just may be a little cleaner to table it, but that will delay it a little longer. But understanding that there's still going to be some time constraints before we even get this up and running from a practical perspective.
I guess I, that's, I guess I don't understand that part. So it seems to me that this seems pretty self-enacting. It does, it says all ordinances are appealed if necessary. It doesn't, it doesn't actually, I don't think, say anything about having to make any modifications to the bylaws or anything right now, other than striking sort of the language that it would be in conflict. So I, I believe you, but I'm, I'm looking at this, it seems pretty clean to do something right now, and that this could also, this could be the basis for what's been modified. But if you're telling me that it's quicker, quicker and cleaner to do it the other way, I, I believe you. I'm just worried that we're pushing it off a long way and not getting a lot different.
Commissioner Collo?
So Commissioner, I think Commissioner Macy's a good example here, is like adding, there's two students on the EAB, right? So I think the repealer here repeals the student ordinance process, but what the repeal in here doesn't deal with is the ordinance that established the EAB in the first place. And that lists what the membership of the EAB is, and it limits it. So I think what Mr. Krasinski wants to do is write an ordinance that would then, inside this ordinance, impact all those other ordinances that enabled the boards and committees to begin with. Because if, right now, if we wanted to add a student to it after left appointments, we would then have to take up a first reading and second reading at changing the EAB legislation within the code, Booker Code.
Right now, the, the numbers are, work out, and we're right in the middle of discussion of our updating our ordinance and bylaws as was directed by Susan. So it's not creating any more work, it can just move forward as, as it's been going.
So I also wonder, we also agreed last time that this would be up to each individual board, what they want to do. You're presuming every student that currently is on a board today wants that responsibility, right? So there might be boards where the boards decide, you know, they don't want to necessarily do that, it's not right for them. Or they may say, we want to do it, and we want to add another member to make it even, or an odd number, whatever it may be. So my understanding was, is that we are opening up the option for the boards to decide what they wanted to do for their own governance, and that those, any affected ordinances, as those petitions happen, would come here to this table just to, as a modification. So instead of doing something comprehensively, instead of trying to figure out a perfect formula, is it best just to say, okay, we'll get two of these, and we'll just do them unique? Because every board is, every board's rules and ordinances are set up differently. Commissioner Hozog.
So I, yeah, I agree with that, but I think the City Commission should say that all students are voting members nonstop, and that we shouldn't let advisory boards who advise us determine if they want the students to be voting members. They might want to decide how many people are on their board, I guess we can, that, but I think we should make the statement that all members on the board are, or at least students are the voting member, or are voting members, too.
Let's, Commissioner Hunt?
So Mr. Krasinski, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that your overall comprehensive amendment of this proposed amendment would allow for, if a particular committee was interested in having students on, they could bring a student on without necessarily having to come back here, having to amend its bylaws. We don't have to decide, say, for instance, the Charter Review Committee wouldn't have to decide right now whether or not they wanted a student member on, but a year from now, if that were the case, without having to come back here and amend its bylaws, it would be able to bring that student member on. Is that right?
That was kind of the intent, in the spirit of the overall intent of the ordinance as originally adopted by the Commission when it was adopted. As it sits right now, it does not make the statement that Commissioner Herzog was just asking that it make, that it, it still does as it sits now, leaves it up to each individual board and commission. And I guess I would ask for your direction, if, if that's, if you want to leave it to the individual boards and commissions to make that determination as to their student members, or if you want to make the statement, as Commissioner Herzog said, to include student members uniformly on all boards and commissions as voting members, and what that would look like, that would indeed merit a change, either this or to any, if you did table this, to that proposed amendment. And I'm not, I'm hearing kind of a difference of opinion, so, you know, with any problem, there's more than one way to accomplish your goals. This was one way. There's always going to be a better mousetrap sometimes, and I'm suggesting that there could be, but there's no harm in, if you wanted to even move forward tonight, that I can't, I couldn't bring something back to you that maybe kind of uniformly cleans it up, too. Or, you know, if you decide, if you wanted to table it for whatever reason, I don't know what the consensus of the Commission is right now as far as sending the message, if you want to still leave it individually to the boards, or do a uniform, all-student exception to voting. So that I would need some direction on. But right now, that does not send that message that Commissioner Herzog was just referencing.
I'm going to go Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Herzog, but I'm going to make a quick comment first. So to what extent have we, and maybe Ms. Barkman can answer this, or maybe not, have we actually surveyed the students and the boards to the extent that, you know what I mean? Like, it would be helpful maybe before we decide which motion we want to go down, which action we want to take, that would make sense to get that feedback. I mean, I know it's coming from the EAB driving it, but maybe other boards have a different opinion. Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Herzog.
I can answer that.
Let me real quick, because that's sort of where I was going, is that I wonder, I agree with Commissioner Herzog, that I don't think I want to leave it up to the boards and commissions. I think I want this body to make that decision. But I do think, as I think the mayor thinks, that the students should be able to choose if they don't want to be a voting member. So maybe that's a third option. So if, I think the students are probably all going to want to be voting members, but in the instance that they don't want that responsibility, I think they should be able to, we should be able to continue to have what we have now, which is student members who can join and be participating in board without being voting members, if that's what they choose.
Commissioner Herzog?
So right now, any board except for the planning zoning, like, there's specific ones that can't have students on. But right now, right, any student can come to the city and say, hey, I would like to be on a board, what, and they can just be on any of them, right?
Well, keep in mind that, again, this is only for advisory boards, statutorily created boards that require a registered voter resident of the city, they can't serve on, such as planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, those types of things.
But other boards?
But advisory boards. So these boards, no matter what they do, generally don't have decision-making powers and would make recommendations to the City Commission for the City Commission to ultimately make a determination. So the impact is only on those advisory boards, not on actual authority-making or decision-making bodies.
Right. So that's what I'm talking about, as far as students coming to any of the boards, and, but these boards aren't choosing if they're students or not, because the students are allowed to come and participate, right?
So, yeah.
And so, I mean, I guess we could determine, like, the EAB has two, but maybe we just say all boards have one, and that'd be, and then we allow everyone that comes to come and sit and be part of our discussions and public, you know, have public comment, and they can still participate in meetings. Now, if students become, have the choice if they can vote or not, do adults have the choice to vote or not? Or if you're an adult and you are sitting on the board, you have to vote, right?
So there's, there's another way you could, I'm negotiating against myself here, because I'm not sure I fully support, but if I were advising the majority here, it seems to me we're talking about, you know, whether or not, when you boil it down, whether or not an individual that isn't 18 has the ability or right to vote on these advisory boards. The cleanest thing you could do is simply keep everything the same, allow for additional, you know, the students to be, to participate, but then make no requirement that you have to be 18 to vote on an advisory board. So the Commission could appoint people with vacancies. So if there's a vacancy on the EAB, you could appoint a person that is 16, and they would have the ability to vote. That way, you don't have any of the number issues or whatever. And then you would have a non-voting seat that you could appoint anybody to as well. So you don't distinguish between student and non-student, you just lower the age as to what constitutes, you know, a board member. But then, you could appoint all 15-year-olds if you had a crazy commission, and then, you know, so that would be a problem, too. So Commissioner Collo.
Ms. Ray, I wonder if you could make, I think Commissioner Macy was saying something like this, but make three classes, you know, two classes of student, one class of student voting, and one class non-voting also, to settle, I think, some of the differences that you articulated earlier. Because one thing with the student appointments is that they end, student appointments go academic year to academic year. So they end, and that was one thing that Mr. Krasinski and I talked about, when talking about doing one clean resolution that ties up every ordinance. Because if we change the number, you know, back to the EAB, if you change the amount of membership on the EAB for one to three years for a student, that needs to be revised back down again when that student leaves.
Yeah.
And that's within the enabling legislation. So that's why Mr. Krasinski is recommending that we can have a cover-all phrase in there. But yeah, you know, if you want, maybe leave a room for students to be non-voting students, that might be a different class.
I think that was just a bad idea. I thought I'd throw it out there at the risk of a bad idea, which, hey, you know? But the other element you kind of bring up is interesting, and I kind of forgot to make this point, but there is a, if we're making a distinction already out of the gate, that the term for a student participant is one year or academic year, but the term for a normal appointee might be three years or four years, or whatever the term is, out of the gate, those aren't the same positions. And the question is, do they deserve the same vote? You know what I mean? I mean, I, I'm not saying I think one way or the other, I'm just saying that if someone's there for three years and signing up for a full commitment and is going to be there to get the heat and everything like that versus somebody that's in on a ramp up, they learn in six months, and then they have six months and maybe, you know, then they're gone. You know, does that, based on the nature of the appointment of one year, carry the same weight as somebody? Even though that person that just started for a three-year term makes votes in the six months, the idea is that, you know, they'll be, their tenure or anticipated tenure matters differently.
I was first appointed for 13 months when I first came to the City Commission.
And that was a disaster. I'm just kidding, Commissioner Collo. So we have a motion on the table to table. So you can say no to this, and then go back to the original script and just kind of do it. You can have the city attorney spend a lot of hours rewriting everything, you can abandon it for another day. It's all up to the privilege of this body. I am just going to administer the dialogue. I'm listening for crickets under the desk.
What about a vote?
All right, I guess I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
I would have known, but I would, I kind of like to go back to the original language, that's why I would know.
No, we lost anyways.
I don't like the other part of it, but no vote, but my, my thinking would suggest go back to the original language, if I could just hear that.
Yeah. I think my no vote is also like tabling it, I don't know, like reconstructing it regardless of how I might ultimately feel on, on supporting it or not. I think that, you know, rewrite, we might, as we rewrite everything, everything has 12 dimensions to it, and it might be a lot bigger than we think, but that's just me. Okay, all right, so we tabled it. Okay. All right, move on to the next agenda item, which is the Proposed Ordinance Amendment, 2024-11 Fugitive Dust Regulation, second reading. Mr. Krasinski?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, on the agenda for second reading is Proposed Ordinance Amendment 2024-11 Fugitive Dust Regulations. There's no updates to add between first and second reading, so absent any questions, I'll leave it at that.
Any discussion? Any motion? Okay, Commissioner Herzog?
So I'm in support of this ordinance. I think it protects public health. One thing that came up in, since the last meeting, is that I was driving around Royal Oak, and a commercial building was coming down, was being demolished, surrounded by residents. It looked like they were doing everything right, wedding and so forth, and they are regulated in a different ordinance, in a different way, but there was no sign, and that's because they're regulated in a different way. But I think we still need a sign or communicating to the public that this is happening and for their safety, their public health safety. So I have already brought this to the attention of the city management team, so I think we will be moving in that direction.
That's good. Good catch, good observation. Mr. Krasinski?
Just to follow up in that regard, yes, that was brought to our attention, where you have some possible preemption issues we need to look at under state law, because it's my understanding the state heavily regulates commercial and industrial demolitions, and that would not affect if we decide to move forward with the similar sign requirements, because that's all the change would require was, would be the sign that we require for residential demolitions concerning fugitive dust. But that would be in a separate, completely separate and distinct ordinance under our code. So that future change, once we look at all the legal concerns may be presented to you, depending on what preemption issues may or may not be present. But that would not affect this present ordinance moving forward today, because that's completely separate and distinct.
So we'd have to get through the preemption issues of the state, and then if that, we found a way to do it, then we would adjust the, another ordinance to make it work.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Herzog?
I would approve.
Okay, I want to make a second, second, Commissioner Cheesem? All right, discussion on this one. All right, just to be clear, we're going to have to brush the dust off the commercial one later. Oh, man, took me a while to construct that joke.
You whupped my talisman.
All right, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Proposed Ordinance Amendment 2024-10 Marijuana Regulation, second reading. Mr. Krasinski?
Hey, Your Honor, again, second reading on this ordinance contains two specific amendments, one pertaining to a Class A micro-business being part of the marijuana micro-business under the definitions. In the current ordinance, luckily, we were able to get the red line added this time, so you can see those specific proposed amendments. It simplifies that definitional section to comply with state law and state rules and regulations with regard to micro businesses within the state. And number two was the adjustment to the allowed operating hours of those, of retail establishments from originally 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The proposed requested change is from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the requested allowable operating hours. And there is supporting documentation from both of those, both of those requesters with explanatory letters and other supporting information that reviewed these two requests. And absent any questions, happy to answer any questions.
Motions? Commissioner Macy?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Taken by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
I'll just say, at the first reading, I was on the fence, and I voted no. I was, you know, not quite sure what the rationale was for the extended hours, and that was the, the. the, the piece that I was a no on, was simply the expanded hours. But I understand when you're drafting an ordinance, a brand-new ordinance, you don't know what you don't know, until you get into practice and you find out whether there's lost opportunity for the business, and let's face it, it's a business. And so, yeah, after, you know, reviewing some things, I realized that, you know, an additional hour or two doesn't necessarily cause much harm. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Anybody else? Commissioner Herzog?
I was also a no vote at the last meeting, and I was really just concerned about the residents in the area in the south part, but we have parts of the zoning ordinance that would kind of protect them from any, any issues there. So I'm in support.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, which is the pending litigation discussion from closed session. Commissioner Macy?
We move to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign documents regarding pending litigation as discussed in closed session.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo.
Yes.
All right. Discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to adjournment. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of the community we love and cherish, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Cheesem. All right. Discussion on this critical motion that will terminate our time here today at this table. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Adjourned.